Taxation is theft.
Please, at least leave us alone in our living room.
My job is to find the truth.
Double the taxes.
I'm a human being, god damn it! My life has value!
Triple the taxes.
This is an IRS agent's dream.
If you think that the capital will ever treat us fairly, you are lying to yourself!
Beautiful, lovely taxes!
Uh-oh. Sorry, but I don't do taxes.
Did you see the memo about this?
The government is a greedy piglet.
Just leave us alone.
Do you know what Ralph just said?
The roads!
You boys like Mexico!
I'm as far as hell!
Hang on, got some audio issues. What's going on, guys? Taxation is theft. I'm here with Maj Teray. We are live. For those of you who don't know Maj, I'm sure you've seen him around. He's gotten pretty popular over the last couple of years. You're the founder of Black Lives... uh, Black, uh, sorry, Black Guns Matter. And, um, and you've been around a lot of the libertarian events. And right now, you're running for city council at large in Philadelphia. Welcome.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Thanks for having me. The election is tomorrow, actually. I'm looking forward to a W. Even with a loss, you know, this liberty thing is a, uh... we gotta win. But outside of that, we already have one. Because, uh, we're getting, uh, urban America active and galvanized in regards to, uh, being part of the political process. So with that being the case, tomorrow's election should be pretty good. Um, I think it'll be dope. And, um, the marathon continues.
Right. That's awesome. And that's a great attitude to have. Because really, this is the way I've looked at the elections. Like, everyone tells libertarians, "You can't win. You're not gonna win. You're not gonna get enough votes." Like, everything that we have, that we result in, like, whether it's a Democrat, a Republican, a Libertarian, it's all based on what we want. And if everybody's out there buying all this bullshit that politicians are selling us, we're gonna keep getting that. But if we're waking up people every single day to this idea that, like, we don't need government to control us and tell us how to live, that's a win. Every single person we wake up to that is a win, right?
Right, exactly. Especially from a demographic that has been historically told, they're not active and they're not gonna be active. Um, just even today, you know, I had a few cameramen following me around, shadowing me today and tomorrow as well. Um, we go into parts of the hood where there's people that's like, "Yo, I never voted before in my life, but I'm gonna be involved in the local political process." Um, I think those are things that to go in the areas where everyone discounted, uh, that voting block is either nonexistent or democratic. Um, and thinking that, you know, and it's really the soul bigotry of low expectations. But to think that that's an impossible feat, to make progress in that demographic is, like you said, it's a win in and of itself. So I'd take it, you know what I mean? Um, again, we are here to consistently push for liberty. You know what I mean? It ain't about momentum per se. It's more about consistency. So, um, you know, I'm excited about it.
Right. So, um, let's go back a little bit. What brought you into the liberty movement? What kind of, what kind of, um... How did you find out about it? Were you just born this way? Or was there something? Like, did you used to follow the Democrats, the Republicans? And was there a shift?
I was Democrat most of my life. And then I, you know, you evolve. And then I was a Republican for a few years. And then I just, you know, saw a lot of things. No different than the spiritual evolution that people go through. You maybe raised one way, then you gravitate to something else, then you keep learning, and you gravitate to other things. Then you have the ability to utilize and interact with all of these different philosophies, or theologies, or political, uh, parties, or leanings. You can interact with them all without being trapped by any of them. And so, you know, me going in that direction is kinda like what did it. But it's just a natural progression of anybody. Once you start doing actual study outside of just tradition, you start to lean in a direction of freedom and liberty. That's just quite natural. You don't, you do not want to be governed. You want to govern yourself, and you want people to govern themselves. And you think more about, you know, less laws, less government, more property rights, more, um, control of self. And, um, you know, that was really my path. Um, I've read and studied some great, you know, um, patriots and freedom women and men, you know, like the Harriet Tubman's, like the Malcolm X's, like the Roth bars, you know? Um, these are all ideologies that might seem like they're not together, but they actually are. These are just people that are fighting to protect freedom and liberty. And so, um, when you tie that then into an economical, philosophical, and then political standing, it quite naturally leads you to libertarianism. And then some of my libertarian friends or my ANCAP friends say, you know, "The next step could be ANCAP. The next step could be full-on anarchists." But I think that when we're doing these things, we have to make sure that we're educating the demographical people about what these actual terms actually mean. Not just, you know, what mass society has said these terms mean. There's a, there's an actual definition of a word, and then there's a perceived definition. And I think a lot of times, the perceived definition has been deliberately put out there as an incorrect one. So when you're following and learning more and more and more about freedom and liberty, you're gonna go along that path. The only thing that I would stress for people to kinda do is, don't diss the political party that you were just a part of. No different than if you came from Christianity to Islam to 5% to Buddhism to Shintoism to whatever. Don't diss the one that you were just a part of. It was a stepping stone. It was a learning process. Still build, because you'll still have friends and family that are a part of that particular theology or philosophical or political party. So, you know, use it as a stepping stone, a learning moment, and still help the people that are still there to evolve as well.
Awesome. So we got a comment in, I guess I gotta say, "Nice hat." Um, someone watching live right now said he's wearing the hat right now. He's in the Atlanta airport. Um, and I passed through there yesterday, and people were just coming up to me and like, "Hey, can I take a picture of your hat?"
Yeah.
It's really awesome. So let's, uh, let's jump over to that. Um, what do you think about taxation?
I think it's theft. I think that anytime, I think that we've been... Again, when we talk about perceived definitions, if I take something of yours that I did not earn, and don't ask you, that is theft. I think that most Americans are having their money taken from them, and they did not, um, they weren't respectfully asked. And I think that if you respectfully asked certain people and incentivized for them to be more voluntary, I think more people would do that. Um, so to me, I mean, we gotta call a spade a spade. I think that you going and taking people's money before they even see it, regardless of how cute it's been packaged to be, I think that's thievery. So, just because the IRS does it, you know, doesn't make it any less of thievery. So that's my view on it.
Yeah, it's, that's really interesting. And I was thinking about this over the weekend too, 'cause there's like, is definitions, right? If you ask anybody, "Is it okay to steal?", everyone will say, "No." If you ask anybody if it's okay to murder, "No." Like, they know, right? But then it's like, "Okay, so, so why are there taxes? Why are we paying taxes? Isn't that theft?" Well, no, that's not different. That's not theft. And so what they're doing is like, stealing is wrong, but let's redefine stealing to not include the things that I benefit from, or that I believe I'm benefiting from. Um, and it's really interesting that everybody kinda changes these words. And like, with murder, people do it with like, um... I don't wanna, I don't wanna get too far into abortion, but like, some people do it on like, "Oh, but if it's five cells, then it's not murder. And if it's nine months, then it is." And like, they'll, they'll kinda juggle around where that point is. And all they're doing is shifting the definition of what murder is and stealing and all these other things.
That's actually the power of, in the spiritual practices, that's the, that's creation. That's the power of God and the devil. And again, whatever your theology is, the ability to shift the matrix in the universe in a direction that you seek fit, that's the power of God. When it's done with a malintent, you know, or malevolence, um, that's, that's the power of quote-unquote devil. Um, I mean, it is just terms. But my point there is, um, people cherry pick, and they shape the, they shape the narrative based on what benefits them. And then when you reshape it, I have the power of translation and shaping and creation. That's one of my very good skill sets. So when I can practically explain that to someone, and why it's a farce, and then inform more and more people that way, that's when you get political power or social power. And you change social constructs. We were socially conditioned and engineered to accepting this tax concept as money, because it didn't always exist. You know, income tax didn't always exist, you know? And since this is the case, we can create a reality where free market and people choose to do things to help out. Voluntarianism. We raised a quarter of a million dollars to do the work that we're doing with Black Guns Matter. We didn't tax anybody. We just asked people to help out and pay it forward. Pay it forward if you thought this was important. Even if I'm not coming to your city next to do these free classes. Some people are, you know, super, super informed on firearm safety and conflict resolution. But they still chose to donate $10,000. You know, some people donated a lot more. The point is, people volunteered. And we were able to educate and get more people safe and responsible firearms owners and respect to their liberties. It's not, we didn't tax anybody to do that, you know? And so, explaining it that way is my ability to then shift the matrix in a more liberty-based way. Um, I think that power to receive that lesson or that message, everyone has. Everyone has that power. Um, I think we're bombarded with things to constantly keep us confused and chaotic, so we're not evaluating it from a very practical perspective. Something as simple as, you know, you not receiving that lesson or that message from someone that doesn't necessarily look exactly like you. And that's what a lot of my white homies run across, if they libertarian or if they pro-gun or, you know, the certain portions of this matrix or people in this matrix have made people feel like, if you don't look exactly like me, you became possibly be telling me something that's good for me. And that's the furthest thing from the truth. So my skill set and my ability is to not be trapped by any of those boxes, go into any one of those boxes that I choose to, to inform people that are currently still in those boxes, give them very practical and simple information, and help them leave that box when they're ready to. That's all it is. It's no different than what the founding fathers were doing. They're like, "Yo, what if we just went to a place and created a thing where people could do whatever they want and respected property rights and personal bodies? And, you know, and stuff like that? What if?" And that's what the ideal of America was created from, with its own contradictions. Because even in there, there were men that still was like, "Yeah, but I still kinda wanna own people." You know what I'm saying? And there were also men that were like, "Yo, I'm not gonna own people." Shouts to Thomas Paine. You know, T-Pain wasn't about that. So my point there is, it just depends on how we wanna inform people. And we wanna use our powers to shape the matrix to, uh, in support of our liberties or in support of our own enslavement, for lack of a better term.
Awesome, man. Um, yeah, that's, that's, um... I always go back to, um, um, like, so Harriet Tubman, right? Said she freed all these slaves. She could've freed more if only they knew they were slaves. And like, when I'm talking with people, it's funny. Like, they're always, they're always in this mentality of like, "Well, but we need government. We need, like, if it weren't for government, I'd be shooting up heroin, or my kids would, or these other things." And there's no sense of self-responsibility. And it's like, you have to, you have to bridge that gap for some people because that's the, like you said, the matrix, right? That's the cage that they're put into. And as long as they're kind of happy in there, and they're told that from in here, "If you don't, don't open that door and go out, 'cause it's scary out there."
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And if that's what they're told, then they're not gonna open that door. But if you open the door and show them that it's not scary out there, then they're like, "Oh, okay, this makes sense." And they're more comfortable making that, making that transformation.
When they outside and see outside of the scare tactics that's been thrust upon them, you don't even have to do much. You know, if you watch television, it's like, soon as you go out... Now, don't get me wrong, there's parts of the globe that are war-torn. And a lot of that is because of, um, warmongers and a culture of war. And to be quite honest, that's our, you know, military unchecked. And the people running our military unchecked. But most of the rank-and-file members of the military wanna come home and only wanna serve when it's an actual threat or an actual war. But with that being the case, for the most part, when you go outside, it's peaceful. You know, like, and like, this is one of the best times in human history. Like, you go outside, it's like, like I'm in a restaurant. There's like air conditioning and heat and AC, you know, air ducts. You know, and so, when you get past the fear factor, it's like, nah, that's game. There's, there's, there are people there that benefit from that Tower of Babel. People being chaotic and babbling with each other, not really communicating with each other. You know, and so, when you see that, and you show people that, to just kinda step back from the elephant and calm down. And when they see how much they've been lied to, you know, how many scare, scare, scares been told them, it's like, "Yo, it's not that deep outside. Some bad stuff happens here and there." You know, but for the most part, you live a pretty 70 years on this planet, give or take a few. You have, you know, a pretty much peaceful existence, give or take a few squabbles. You, you know, you take care of your family, you do what you do, and you're happy. That's actually what life is mostly about in this modern era. Um, unless there's people jumping, you know, confusing people or trying to take other people's poppy fields or whatever, you know what I mean? So, explaining that and showing that to people in a very, very simple term. They have tried to make that seem more complicated than it is. But doing that in a very respectable manner, an honest manner, I convert, quote-unquote, convert more people in that than anything. Everybody in the hood is liberty and they're very conservative in their values and their freedom. They're libertarian in their practices. Their values are very, "Yo, I'm gonna just work on me. I'm gonna do me and my family." And they're liberty-based, 'cause they want them to be, to be able to do that for themselves and for others to be able to do that for themselves. So we're a mixture of these things. We're conservative in one regard. I know people say, "Well, conservative and libertarian are completely different ideological." I get it. So, but I'm not talking about the political part per se. I'm talking about just an individual. Yeah, just most people are like, kinda like chill. Like, most people are conservative. They're chill. And they respect liberty. So they're conservatives and they're libertarians, you know? Um, and they not tripping. But when you show people that in very simple terms, most people come over to the liberty side. They already are that. They're just, a lot of times, when you're talking about philosophically or politically, they're just voting out of that fear and that tradition. You know, and fear fades and traditions change. And that's just our job, to make the fear fade and have the traditions change. That's all.
Right. What's, what do you think is the biggest hang-up that you've come across when you talk to people?
Fear. They scared.
But like, any particular one?
I remember this amazing quote. I remember this amazing quote from John Gotti. He said, um, "He doesn't lie." He said, "Because people that lie are afraid, and I'm not afraid of anyone, so I don't lie." And I was like, "Whoa, that's real." You know what I'm saying? And I thought it was, I thought it was a really dope, um, perspective. And so, the biggest issue that I see, fear of being perceived as. Fear of not being received. Fear of rejection. Fear of ridicule. Fear of, your fear is what's making you, you know, weak. You know? Like, the fear of, some people I know in the libertarian party, their fear of winning is holding them back. So they just complain a lot. They don't really like go outside and execute. You know what I'm saying? Your fear of looking silly. "Maj, you're a Black Guns Matter dude. You can't go do..." Yes, I can. I could do whatever I want. That's freedom. That's liberty. I can do whatever I want. Some shit I just don't wanna do. It's like, "Nah, I'm good." You know, but the things that I wanna do, I wanna serve my community. I wanna be a public servant. All right, so let's go do it. Let's see what happens. Even if I, you know, tomorrow, I'm not a city councilman. I've been a public servant in my community for 10 years. I've already been doing the job, you know? So, fear has been, and it's, the crazy thing about fear is it's not real. It's just some shit you telling yourself about something that hasn't even happened yet.
Yeah.
It's like, when you know how you get on a plane and some turbulence happening, you start thinking about, "Aw, man, the plane's gonna..." That has not happened. That's just what you're telling yourself. I've been on planes hundreds of times at this point. And it's like, okay, there's, you, you gotta let, like, be afraid, like, people that are like, um, that like are scared and they pray. Like, you gotta be afraid or pray and be confident. Like, don't do both. Like, if you believe in God, if that's your value system, and if you trust God, why are you fearful? If it's gonna happen, if it's God's will, if you believe in it, it's gonna happen anyway. So why be scared of it? And if you don't believe in God, what you praying for? You know what I mean? So it is, the biggest thing that I've saw, um, is just fear on whatever level. But again, practical information, making people slow down, evaluate things logically. That's what's been the solution for me over the last four or five years in dealing with so many people.
Awesome. So, do you think that's like, um, like, where do you think that comes from? 'Cause I've been looking at this. I've got a bunch of like, um, like, high school students who are helping me out on my campaign. And I see like what they're going through, and it gives me flashbacks to what I went through. And it's like, the pressure that they put on people in high school is like, it's like, I feel like that's where that, where they're putting that fear into people. They're like, you know, "Oh, if you don't do things right, if you don't follow the law, if you don't obey authority and all this other stuff, you're not gonna be able to get a job. You're gonna get homeless. You're gonna end up on drugs. You're gonna, like, you're gonna be worthless." And they keep, they put all this stuff into your head. And at the same time, if you have dissenting opinions, right? Like, if you're, if you're one of these kids that's like, "I wanna question authority." They punish that. And they make you fearful of that, right? They're suspending kids for saying different things. Um, all this crazy stuff that's going on. Like, I'm wondering how, and then we're in, we're in public schools, a lot of us, for like 12 years. How much of that do you think is responsible for all these fears that you're talking about?
A lot of it. Um, you drop, I mean, it's, so it's a two-pronged approach. They're getting younger and attacking the mind from kindergarten up. And the university's bent up. The universities is like, um, uh, cocoons of, uh, this new age definition of liberalism. And it's not liberty. It's not, you know, but the classic liberals was on point. You know what I mean? And so, um, it's both sides. It's like gentrification of your mind from the Sesame Street up and from the university level down. Jordan Peterson gives a break, a great breakdown of it tremendously, um, on a lot of his speeches in regards to, at the university level. So, yeah, you drop your children off for 12 years in a, uh, a mental enslavement camp. That is not to the same extent of what they used to be. We used to have home economics, firearm safety, carpentry, woodshop, all of these things that were practical about your life. Now, like, they're charging like 100 grand for like liberal studies degrees or like gender studies in college. And it's like, it's not really practical. Now, these are philosophical questions that I'm open to everyone pondering. But to charge people 100 and 200 grand to do that is a falsehood that they can't get a job from. So the trick is, is... Right, get a book. Everything that, everything that most of the people that's listening to right now that went to college, most of the stuff that you pay for in college is on YouTube for free. You know, and if you're not gonna be like a doctor or a lawyer or like, um, some specialized job, it's not worth it. And a lot of the specialized jobs are trades. Mechanic, electrician, you know, and, you know, carpenter, whatever, construction worker, is a trade. We gotta, we gotta, you know, get people back to that, like, what's real in life. Your philosophical questions and conversations about that, and you pondering that, you can do that for 10 years. And cool, you don't have to pay to, like, evaluate that, you know? Um, you know, is there however many, you know, genders? Those are philosophical questions. You know what I mean? And those are very modern philosophical questions. But in regards to like, you know, practical shit, like, while you're pondering how many genders there potentially could be, do you have a roof? Like, do you have like running water? You know what I mean? Like, how dope would it be if, while we're pondering this, that could be after we like, dig out a foundation for a home, get the plumbing right, build the skeletal, you know, get the electrical and the AC, you know, the HVAC happening, you know, and then we can philosophically have these discussions every evening after we finish doing it, you know?
And in the nice air conditioning.
Right. And so, it's like, these are the practical things. And it doesn't have to be one or the other. It can be both. The problem is the pendulum leaning too much to the one over the other. And, uh, our job as, you know, as liberty-minded folks, as, and I'm gonna say it, as Democrats, as Republicans, as libertarians, as conservatives, as independents, as free thinkers, our job is to add to all of these conversations, not making people choose that they gotta pick one or the other. You can entertain all of these as long as you have a respect for other people's, right? Even the ones that you disagree with. But, and while we're all doing this, let's all have practical things that like, if the zombie apocalypse happens tomorrow, you know, your conversation about gender studies won't matter as much as can you build a fire? You know, your conversation about, um, you know, like, the Me Too movement won't matter as much as can you shoot the zombie in the face? You know, uh, do you know how to weld? Do you know how to swim? Do you know how to grow fruits and vegetables? Can you be a farm? The founding fathers were like hemp farmers and regular farmers Can you be a farm, the founding fathers were like hemp farmers and regular farmers and printers and like potters and, you know, all of these different things, blacksmiths, you know, so, so we, let's, I'm saying, we don't have to pick one or the other, I'm saying we should do all of those, but right now, we doing one way more than the other, you know, or the others. And that is a, that is a design, and we have to be aware of that design, um, and not be, and we ain't gotta call it out, we can just fix it, we can just go, you know, I'm, I'm taking yoga, I'm taking carpentry, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm learning how to grow food. It's not, it's not like super hard, I could do that in the hood, I could do that on my roof. So, these are just, you know, um, little steps that we can take while understanding the other philosophical questions that we all ponder, and not having to choose one or the other.
Nice. So, what do you think, um, okay, I have this idea that we talk about like where the poverty line is and people have to work and they're not getting paid enough, so they're, they have to work harder and everything else, and they end up with absolutely no time for themselves, no time to do anything. You, you hear about people, um, they've, they've got kids, they've got jobs, they've got all this, they want to get back to school, but they just don't have the time or the money to make it happen, and that kind of locks you into that cycle of, of being stuck there. But at the same time, if you had some of those skills, you could get out, but also at the same time, if, if, the way I see it, when you have government taking from you, right, like, you have property tax, no matter where, like, you could say, okay, I built my own house, I have my own, my farm and garden and everything else, and I'm living here and it's wonderful, but I still have to get a job to pay those taxes, it just keeps taking away from you. And if you don't have that because you're still paying rent on top of that, and the, the property taxes and, and your income taxes and everything else are just taking everything you have, it, it holds you back from being able to advance to that point. Do you think that that's, do, do you think that that can make it impossible, or do you think that, that everybody's, everybody has a path that they can get out of that to what you're talking about?
So, it's both, there's definitely a setup by design, um, so, yeah, we gotta hold those people accountable for even creating that reality because it wasn't always that way. The other part, like, looking at you, Federal Reserve Bank, um, on top of that, yeah, yeah, on top of that, um, you also gotta look at your individual choices. I'm not gonna pretend like it's not a matrix of people trying to keep you to be, you know, a mental slave, it exists. On top of that, that can be broken with a little bit of study and knowledge itself and saving your money. So, you know, if you have to have the newest bauble or, no, I gotta, this is a iPhone, I think 10, and I got, I had like a six before it, and it's 11 now, but I just happened to get this because it was years upon years upon years, but you don't have to have the newest one every time, you know? Your, your greed level, and, and it is conditioning to make you want to like chase these things, but again, at a certain point, it's individual, you know, it's like we respect individual liberty, you gotta be accountable for individual choice, you know what I'm saying? Like, I have two horrible baby moms, but brother, you slept with them. You, you, you know what I'm saying? You, you were like, oh, she's hot, she's got a great ass, you did that, you know what I'm saying? Um, you, you didn't thoroughly vet the person. Um, and so, it's the same thing to me, it's like, yeah, it is the outside matrix, but there's also internal strife, and you're not doing the right thing with your resources or your time. So, when it's like, oh, I don't have time to do anything else, find joy in self-improvement, find joy in discipline, find joy in five minutes of yoga, find joy in 10 minutes of, you know, research on how to grow food, find joy in 20 minutes of what is cryptocurrency, find joy in these other things that further get you out of that, find joy in finding liberty.
Yeah, absolutely.
And in doing that, you'd be surprised, you'd be surprised how much of the things that you think are holding you back is you, you know? And so, it's a balance there, and just, you know, I never do one without the other, I don't call out that outside interference without looking at the internal acceptance of that interference, you know? And so, it's both of those things, and if, if people look at it from that balanced approach, they'll, they'll start to recognize the things that they're following, that they're internalizing that was outside influences, that they're now internalizing as holding them up, and they'll go, oh, I gotta stop doing this internally because it came from outside, it wasn't my, my own mind, somebody hit me with an inception and dropped a thought in my mind, now I get to root that out, and now I get to save money. You know, like Warren Buffett runs around here in like a really, really old car for his money intake, or his mon, his bank, so it was like, if he can do it, what is stopping you from doing it? You know what I mean? Why do you have to have a new car if Warren Buffett has still to this day never bought a new automobile?
Right.
That's your ego, and that means you internalize some of the bullshit that they were selling you. So, the quicker you let that go, and that's where yoga and spiritual practices for me come into play, you know? It's cool, man, I might, you, you not gonna know if I got a hundred grand on me or a hundred pennies, you're never gonna know, you know what I mean? Because it doesn't matter, it's what you do, it's not about what you cop, it's about what you keep, it's about what you do, it's about who you are, it's about all these higher ideals, these morality conversations, these spiritual conversations that manifest in the physical plane. And all of the rich people that I know understand that, all of the wealthy people that don't suffer from the same things know and apply that to some degree, so, it's external as well as internal, we just gotta maintain that balance.
Awesome. Yeah, that's really great. Um, yeah, and I see that every time I see, you know, all these crazy riots at Black Friday, and, um, like, people spending stupid money, like, I know so many people that are like, yeah, I'm trying to save up to buy a house, and then they're like, yeah, I just bought this new $2,000 flat screen. Um, it's like, it's, it's like, yeah, it is exactly that, I think, um, I mean, I still have this, I have this dollar bill saved from like when I was just down to my last dollar, um, and like, I was, like, I had this mentality of, like, I grew up in LA, so I always saw like people driving around in like Ferraris and really nice cars and everything, and, you know, Mercedes, BMWs everywhere, and I'm like, man, those people suck, they were probably born into that and all this other stuff, and it's, it took a shift of my own mind to be able to say like, no, stop hating on these people, have respect for these people, and like, somebody, somebody actually told me directly like that, have respect, when you see someone with more than what you have, have respect for them, and go over to them and just tell them how much you appreciate what they have, they'll start a conversation with you and they'll tell you how to get it for yourself, they'll give you, they'll give you tips.
Yo, it's so, it's so crazy.
Yeah.
Like, it's, it's like real, like, so many people like, oh, man, I'm so glad you asked me that, here, let me tell you, people want to give you the game.
They want to brag about their story of success, oh, man, it was so easy, I did this and this and this, and you're just like, yeah, you're probably not gonna be able to do exactly what they did, but you're gonna learn from it, and you're gonna be able to take those tools and do something else amazing with it.
Yup, that's how I started BGM, I just was asking people and was like, alright, what do I do to make this idea a thing? And we did it, you know? And all, all of my rich friends, I ask them for, I don't ask them for money, I ask them for information. Now, if they want to give me some money to, to apply this information a little bit faster, I'm not gonna not take it, I'm gonna receive it, I'm gonna flip it, and now we got a business, we got something that makes sense for them and for me, you know? But, um, initially, it's like, yo, put, give me the game, how did you do this? How did you do that? You know what I mean?
Absolutely. So, how long have you been, uh, running Black Guns Matter?
2015, so four years now.
Alright, and what, like, how big is that? How, how many people have you reached?
Millions, millions, bro. Like, I don't keep lists, so I don't know exactly, but millions, across the country, millions.
Awesome. So, yeah, and that's one of those things, like, because when you first started it, like, did you know it was gonna be that big, or did you think it was gonna be something local or?
Nobody had no idea. The people that say they knew, in my experience, those people are normally lying, and they're like, oh, now, you may have an idea of goals, but when their people are like, yeah, I knew exactly, oh, you had goals in mind and you knew what you wanted, but how it shifted, how it came to be, exactly, no. Black Guns Matter was started as one event, it was gonna be one event for people in Philly, and just a bunch of people came from everywhere else, and it was like, yo, we want something like this in our city too, and we was like, yo, let's just do a GoFundMe and do like 13 cities. Then we raised 25 grand and did them 13 cities, and everybody was like, yo, why don't you do my city, my city? And we was like, yo, why don't we do every country, every state in the country? And then we did that, and then people was like, yo, keep going, why don't you raise the goal to a million dollars? And we did, like, we started this as, this was one event, you know? And so, we knew we had ideas for, we always wanted to inform and educate and train people to be safe and responsible and deal in conflict resolution, but, like, I was on the cover of Time Magazine, like, I didn't, I was selling pills and weed and movies, I wasn't, like, that wasn't like, no, that wasn't in my radar, but as we go, we keep seeing the more great things that we can do, and the more people that we can serve, and the more, you know, families that we can protect, it's like, you, it ain't even about the number at this point, it's about, yo, people gonna be lit when they can do this, it's gonna be crazy when people can have this, this is really like how we can further serve more people, and it sounds so weird, but the more we think about how many more people we can service and, and help them be informed about their liberties and protect them, the further we, we move along in this thing, and that's really what it's been. And it sounds weird, it's like, when I stopped focusing on the money, like, as the thing, it's like, yo, it's gonna be crazy, we gonna get everybody in the hood on this, and they gonna be, none, that, that, we gonna, these classes gonna be free, and this gonna be that, that, that. Started doing that, more and more people started like coming and being like, Tom, I wanna, I wanna give a shout to Tommy Lahren, right? Everybody hits her up like, oh, she's this, she's that. We, I did her show about three years ago, when she was down in Texas for The Blaze. She separates from The Blaze, she goes to Fox Nation. For a year, she was fighting to get us onto Fox Nation and do a show. She did that in, uh, our, our Compton class. She came to Compton, helped set up the chairs for the event, all of this, this person has way more of a bigger social media following than me, right? And I was, and I didn't, I didn't pay her for any of this, I didn't do any of that, she just chose to do it because she saw the work. So, saying this to say, you just gotta let, like, kind of like, just be like, yo, how can we service more people? And people told me, don't do her show, don't do such and such, Libertarians tell me to not to do conservative stuff, Conservatives tell me not to do, you know, Libertarian stuff, my Republican friends tell me not to do Democratic stuff, my Democratic friends tell me not to do Republican stuff. I'm Switzerland, y'all, we gonna serve everybody regardless of their political, current political ideology, if they want to do work, if they want to share, if they want to serve the people, we gonna be there to serve them and work with them, and that's that. So, really, it's just about that, and, and the more that's been my perspective.
Yeah.
Like, I'm in a really cool restaurant right now, like, and I'm not tripping, and I'm strapped, like, things are good, life is good, you know, and it's because it's like, I'm just in service. That sounds so weird, but it's, it's, it's been my experience over the last five, six years.
Yeah, I mean, I hear that from so many entrepreneurs, that that's like, too many people, I hear, man, I hear from everybody from like different industries too, like, I guess, I guess they're all entrepreneurs, uh, uh, musicians, um, video producers, technologists, artists, whatever, it's, when you stop thinking about the money and what you can make from it, and you start thinking about what you're creating, and you create it for people instead of focusing on yourself and what you're gonna get out of it, focus on the other people and their enjoyment that they're gonna get from what you're doing, um, if you're an entrepreneur, you don't think about, oh, I'm gonna sell you this stuff and I'm gonna make so much money, you think about, I'm gonna give you so much stuff, I'm gonna give you so much value, and when people see that, they're like, oh, man, I want that, and then their, their competition sees that, and they say, hey, I want that too, I'm gonna give you a ton of money, but by, by creating that extra value because of your want to help somebody, that's what really makes you valuable, that's what, that's what turns you into like the shining light that everybody wants a piece of.
Right. That, that has been true indeed in my experience, like, so, that's been the biggest, one of the biggest lessons for me in the last half a decade, I'll say it definitely.
Nice. So, so this, you brought up something interesting that's, because I've seen a lot of this too, right? People are like, yeah, you don't, don't talk to these people, don't talk to, don't associate with these people, and it's like, okay, look, if you have a message, right, because I, I hear Libertarians tell me this all the time, don't hang out with this guy, he's not a real Libertarian, he's a Democrat, or this guy's a Republican, or don't go on this show, don't go on this podcast, don't associate with these people. Um, Adam Kokech got flack for going to the, to the straight pride parade, but it's like, he went there to speak out in, in peace, to, um, in opposition of a lot of, what a lot of people were doing there. I talk to Democrats all the time in opposition of, of some of their socialist ideas, and it's like, if I just avoid them, we're hiding in a cave, like, in, in the echo chamber, talking to ourselves, what's the point of that? We have to share these ideas with other people, and if you want to share this with, like, if you're worried about socialists taking over, go on a Democrat's show and talk to all of their socialists that are watching who have bought into the socialist philosophy, and tell them, hey, this is why something else might be a better idea, but if you just block it out, it's like, that helps absolutely nobody, I don't see, I don't know why so many people are into that.
Because they afraid, they afraid that, it's like...
It's a trap.
People that are homo, people that, people that are homophobic usually have homophobic desires or homo, homosexual desires. You, you afraid that you're not confident enough to be heterosexual in there because you know in the heart of hearts, those are things in your mind. First of all, the fear of being anything other than what you is, is limiting everybody, so it's the same thing. You still gonna go talking to the communism room because you're scared it's gonna infect you, and you're gonna be off of the free market, because you don't study enough, just repeating stuff.
Or they'll be able to, to out-debate you, and you, they'll say something and you won't know how to respond to it.
And if they do, that means you haven't studied enough and they shared some knowledge with you, so, so?
Yeah.
Like, I'm, I'm running as a Libertarian, not for Libertarians. I'm running as a Libertarian, or I am a Libertarian for me and the other people that aren't aware of what this is.
Absolutely.
That's it, that's why people got, hit me with so much grief because of some of the things that I'm saying, I'm like, like, I'm not actually talking to you guys that's just down in the basement on social media, I'm talking to people that's outside, blue collar workers, the people that's serving food and cleaning this place up at this restaurant, I'm not talking to the people eating. I, I mean, like, I'm not, not, not for that, you know, so, I gotta go. Okay. Alright, so, yeah, I gotta, I gotta, yeah.
Awesome. And so, so real quick, before you go, um, your election's coming up tomorrow, what can people do to help out besides getting out to the polls? Anything we can do online?
You can go to, um, volunteer, repost, 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 retweet, share, all that other stuff. Um, my Twitter is at Maj Toure, M-A-J-T-O-U-R-E, um, majforphilly.com is the website, donate a couple of bucks, it's the last day, but, whatever. Um, what else? Uh, you can, uh, retweet stuff, Instagram is Maj Toure, if you, outside of even the campaign, if you want the Black Guns Matter work, gofundme.com/blackgunsmatter, which still, we ran these two campaigns simultaneously but separate. Um, if you want to support the work people are doing with conflict resolution, deescalation, firearm safety and training specifically in urban areas which need it the most, gofundme.com/blackgunsmatter, and, um, keep supporting, you know, casts like this that are talking about liberty, freedom, and, uh, justice for all, that's what you can do.
Awesome, sounds good. Alright, thanks, man, I'm not gonna hold you up, have a good night, and good luck tomorrow.
Alright, peace.
Alright, see ya.
Absolutely, fuck you, bitch, peace.